Order, we welcome everyone that's in attendance. We're glad to see smiling faces. And at this time, we'll have our pledge of allegiance immediately following our invocation by Mr. Henkel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. We just thank you for our health and able to be here to meet tonight and discuss the issues regarding the citizens of Appomattox County and to make decisions that are based on guidance from you, Lord. We just recognize you as sovereign God over everything, and we recognize that you are the one who protects us. We ask your continued protection upon our sheriff's department, our Appomattox Fire Department, the Pamplin Fire Department, our EMS people as they serve the county, and also all our county employees as they do their duties every day, for we ask it your name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Next, we have setting of the agenda. Anyone have any items they'd like to add? Ms. Adams?
Yes, sir. I would like to add the treasurer, Vicki Phelps. She has an update for the board from the local government investment pool opportunity that is getting invested in June.
Let's make a five, eh? Any other items? Here and none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please sing the five by saying aye. Next is citizen public comment period. This time, it's provided by the board to allow citizens the opportunity to address the board on issues of importance to these citizens. No individual citizen shall be permitted to address the board for more than three minutes. And we have Mr. Jesse Murch. When you come up to the mic, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Jesse Murch. I live at 1890 Church Street. I'm here to speak to the board about the resolution that was talked about in my meeting in July, about adding members to the library board. And I just kind of want to go back to memory lane where this all started, June 21st. At June 21st, you heard from citizens about what was happening at the library and the content that was discovered, the display, the LGBTPQ display, and none of this is news to you. But what I would like to remind you is that every single one of you are actually on the record saying that you did not like the direction of the library, that you did think that there should be a change in the direction of the library. And so as far as this resolution goes, if you're going to just maintain a status quo by putting back on every single member that was originally fired off that board, how does this signal to us except that you're not making good on promises that you made? You're not going to give a change in the direction of the library because you have the same exact status in that library. So I would highly recommend that you not approve of a resolution to add if you decide to go that route, not to add on members of the board that have been vocally in favor of the direction of the library board as it were is. And that was pretty important. If you don't like the LGBTPQ display for children, if you have a member that's on that library board praising that and defending that, that is disconcerting that that is being considered, that member is taken back on the board. Last meeting, there was a lot of appeal defending Ms. Humboldt and things of that nature. This should not be considered a personal thing because we're talking about the direction of the library board, and we're talking about a change of leadership so that such things will not happen again. So for example, Amy Carter, remember last June 21st meeting, you even advised about potentially creating a resolution to go to the library board to make regulations so that something like this would never happen again. Bill, you mentioned that your member was not in favor of these types of things, and she was going to make sure this never happened again. John, you made a motion to fire the library board in solidarity with the people in that meeting in the first meeting to see change to those things. And Al Jones, you even made similar comments that this is inappropriate trouble. You seconded people's motion, and Al Jones, you thirded it with a majority vote on those things. It's important that you recognize where we are in all this, and that if you just resort back to what was the status quo, then all of you have broken the law. If you're the one who avoids, now obviously, there's a free, potentially a free to vote, you've just got to do the best you can for your commitments. But many of you are on the record saying, here's what we think, here's what we believe. And it's not good by your constituents to go back on those promises and back on the commitments that you made. So thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Excuse me, anyone else here to address the board who failed to sign up? If not, then we'll continue on. First, we have on the appearances, Mr. Alex Rinden from Dominion Energy. Welcome, sir.
I'm the chairman, member of the board, county staff, and expert in the opportunity to speak today this evening. My name is Alex Rinden from Dominion Energy. I'm the external affairs representative.
Thank you. External affairs representative for Appomattox County from Dominion Energy. And I do have a slide presentation, but I will just go ahead and get started because my first slide is a graphic that illustrates our company's core values, but what I wanted to highlight was our mission statement, which is, we are dedicated to delivering safe, reliable, affordable, and sustainable energy. Those four words are really what I wanted to take some time to impress upon you all this evening. Safe, reliable, affordable, and sustainable. Those are, that's foundational to what we do every single day. We, that's what we're committed to do, and I'm going to, I'm going to hit on each of those topics as I kind of go through some of the items that the company has going on in the Commonwealth and here in Appomattox. First, safety. We're all aware that the grid, really all of our critical infrastructure in this country is facing more threats than ever, both physical, cyber, and from natural disasters. We're seeing more intense weather events, and a couple of incidents that come to mind, the substation attacks across the border in North Carolina, and the Colonial Pipeline cybersecurity attack that shut down and interrupted service a couple of years ago that we all felt at the gas pump, I did at least. Thank you. Am I able to control this from here?
Maybe. Try it.
I can do that. So keeping the grid safe, again, natural disasters, physical security, cybersecurity, that's always been a core value of Dominion Energy's. You know, we start every meeting with a safety message, and safety for our employees, and ultimately, safety around our infrastructure is pretty critical. We're increasing the investments in that. We've got grid hardening plans, we've got cybersecurity investments that are only increasing. You know, ask me how hard it is to log into my phone every day to check my email. I go through several steps, but that's to protect you, it's to protect our customers to ensure that that service continues reliably. So that's safety. Next is reliability. I'm going to scroll down a little bit here. So who remembers right before Christmas, December 23rd into December 24th? It was pretty cold. My pipes froze. Didn't leave my water dripping. That was, that was a pretty major event. We also, obviously, from weather effects, had outages, we had damaged infrastructure, but that was also a moment of peak electricity demand because of, because of the temperature, how cold it was. You can see there on the right, that graph demonstrates our fuel mix that day. We see that as an opportunity that we can point to, to say, we answered the call that day. We've got a diverse fuel mix that we were able to keep the lights on, we were able to keep our generators on, and that graph actually shows before the sun came up. Obviously, December is not peak solar output, but once the sun did come up, the electricity generated by solar was able to further ease the constraints on other resources. Additionally, we see that as a success for the regulatory environment here in Virginia. If you cast your mind back a few years to the issues that came about in Texas as a result of the terrible cold snap that they had, some of that failure was down to the lack of winterization efforts at their generating stations in Texas. Our regulators at the State Corporation Commission require us to pursue a number of winterization efforts at all of our generating stations, and because of those, we were able to keep those running during what was our peak demand during the winter season. Still touching on reliability, outages. Obviously, we can't keep our lights on, you know, 100% of the time, but it's important that we, you know, we answer that call as well, quickly, reliably, safely, and efficiently. There are a couple of tools that I wanted to highlight up there. There are a few ways that individual customers can report outages. They can go to our website at dominionenergy.comoutages. They can report an individual outage there, they can do it through our mobile app, or they can call 1-866-DOM-Help or 1-866-366-4375. That's really important. Those go right to our emergency operations center, and that helps inform prioritization for restoring outages, and it's just a real, it's really key that when we have outage events like that, that we get customer feedback quickly and reliably. The other tool that I wanted to highlight for you all is the municipal outage portal. County staff and other, other members who are responsible for emergency management in the locality should have access to this, and if not, you know, let me know. But this is a powerful tool that allows staff to see outages in real time, and you'll be able to get some information on those outages, including when, when it's available, estimated times of restoration. You can see when, when work is actually occurring, and importantly, you can also update special conditions in that app. And what I mean by that is during an outage event or during a weather event, if you all open a warming shelter during the winter, and for some reason, if that's not your normal warming shelter, if power or some other, you know, incident has rendered that unusable, you can go in and, again, in real time, you can update that so that our operations folks can see that. And the last thing that I'd like to highlight on this, on this page, I'm going to provide you with my contact information, and I have business cards as well. I'm a resource to you as well during those events. You know, when, when we have outage events, I'm on all the time. I'm, you know, taking phone calls, and sometimes that can be a shortcut. If you have some important information to relay to our operations center, you know, I can, I can help you cut through the noise there. My next slide here, we've hit safety, we've hit reliability, we're going to hit affordability. Those two graphs at the bottom show our residential and our industrial rates as compared to regional and national averages. As you can see, we're well below some regional averages, and we're below all those averages there, including South Atlantic, National, Middle Atlantic, East Coast, and New England. That doesn't mean that we can rest on our laurels. You know, we, we hear a lot from our customers that we're still, they're, they're still concerned about affordability, and in conjunction with legislators and our regulators at the State Corporation Commission. We saw a bill passed by the General Assembly in the last session that made some pretty large changes to our regulatory structure that ultimately we see as providing savings to our customers down the line. I'm a liberal arts major, I'm not a finance major or an accounting major, so some of it's a little bit over my head, but, you know, we rolled in about $350 million of rate adjustment clauses into base rates. We further empowered the State Corporation Commission to look at those rates by changing the review schedule from a triennial of every three years to every two years. And another important one here, due to the volatility of natural gas prices over the past few years, we've seen that fuel cost, you know, go up dramatically. And in an effort to reduce the rate shock on customers, because that's a cost that does get passed directly on to customers, it's something that we don't see a profit on, but in order to protect customers from what we see as a possible $16 a month for an average customer price increase, we, through that bill, we established a framework with the State Corporation Commission to hopefully smooth that increase over a number of years so that that doesn't hit customers' pockets all at once. And to go to my next slide here, safety, reliability, affordability, and now a little bit about sustainability. You can see the graph there, in 2015, just eight years ago, we only had one megawatt of solar operational in the Commonwealth of Virginia. That was enough to power about 250 homes. Just eight years later, today, we've got nearly 10,000 megawatts of solar under development and in operation, and are on track to meet our, our goal of 16,100 megawatts of solar by 2035. Just this past year, we make an annual filing with the State Corporation Commission every year with a number of solar projects for their approval, and our most recent filing had more than 800 megawatts of solar involved in it. That's something that we see as a benefit to, obviously, our customers who are asking for increasingly, increasingly sustainable energy, and we see that as a benefit to the Commonwealth and to localities as well. Just that filing alone last year will support almost 5,000 jobs and more than $920 million in economic benefits. One more slide on sustainability, talking about the future of nuclear energy in the Commonwealth. We've got a great reputation as an operator of nuclear facilities here in the Commonwealth of Virginia, over half, half a century of that. We're in the process of relicensing our units at North Anna Power Station and have already relicensed our Surrey Power Station. It's also a subject of interest for energy policy for others in the Commonwealth. I'm sure you've heard the governor, Governor Youngkin has spoken a little bit about prioritizing small modular reactors. It's a technology that isn't quite mature enough to be commercial today, but we do anticipate we'll be able to be commercialized in the next decade or 15 years, and we plan to include those in our fleet in the future. We're working hard on making sure that, that that's an important part of our all-of-the-above energy strategy as well. And on this, speaking of all of the above, on this next slide, I'm going to talk a little bit about the Integrated Resource Plan. Again, not an accounting major, but what, what I want you to look at is that blue line on the graph there. What that represents is the growth in electricity demand and Dominion Energy's service territory over the next 15 years, the projections. As, you can see that those projections for demand growth are pretty high. The Integrated Resource Plan is a, is a document that we submit to the State Corporation Commission annually to show how we plan to meet that demand over the next 15 years. It's sort of a snapshot in time, it's not a definitive build plan, but this last IRP, Integrated Resource Plan that we submitted to the commission, showed that, you know, our modeling suggests that the all-of-the-above energy strategy is really the only approach that's going to be, that's going to work to continue to assure reliability as we meet that demand. What that's going to mean is that we're going to continue to expand our renewable portfolio, including solar, offshore wind, and we're also going to be preserving most of our current power stations. Again, this is not a definitive build plan, but our modeling does suggest that we're not going to be able to close those in the next 15 years just to continue to meet reliability. And again, we're going to be considering new nuclear and natural gas resources as we rise to the challenge of meeting that incredible demand growth there. Enough with the serious business stuff, I wanted to end with a little bit of good news for Appomattox County. You might recognize some familiar faces in that photo. We were really humbled to, the Dominion Energy Charitable Foundation was really humbled to be able to support the Appomattox Christian Academy Career and Technical Education Center with a grant that allowed them to make a down payment on their first six welding booths right across the hall there. I saw Mr. Boone on my way in, and he told me that they're going to start installing them tomorrow. So that was a really important step that we took, you know, we, we saw an opportunity there to help students, adult learners, and as well as employers here in the county. We, you know, part of what made that a real winner for us was the partnerships that ACA had with the county and with CBCC. We were just really happy to see that through, and we're really proud of the impact that we were able to help make. So I'm really proud to have been a part of it, and thanks to the county staff here and to Mr. Boone as well, in making that happen for, for the Career and Technical Education Institute. On my last slide here, it's just my contact information. I also have business cards if any of you would like them. I'd be happy to take any questions, or I'd be happy to let you move on in respect of your time.
Floor is open for any questions for Mr. Rinden. We really appreciate you coming and talking to us and explaining all the different avenues that you all have been approaching, and we continue to look forward to working with you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And you really met a good man when you met Mr. Boone.
That I did. That I did. Thank you again.
Thank you. Oh, this is a big one. This is the big one. Just where in the world have you been for the last 12 months? Mr. Michael Womack, Forest Manager, Virginia Department of Forestry. Welcomes.
Oh, thank you. All right, so as you know, I'm back again to present the county with their portion of the proceeds from the timber sales on the Appomattox Buckingham State Forest for fiscal year 2023. So as you know, the state forest system is self-supported from timber sales and recreational activity use permits, and this has been going on since the federal government acquired the land under the Bankhead Jones Act back in the 1930s. So the county the timber is harvested in receives a portion of the timber sale proceeds. And this year, Appomattox County's portion is $16,999.50.
All right. Yes, sir. We are always glad to see you. Thank you.
All right, I'll see you next year.
Thank you, sir. All right, next is a courthouse PPEA presentation, Mr. John Spencer, app purchasing agent, and William Cook, president of Jamerson Lewis.
I'll keep my part short because you really want to listen to him. But I will like to say that with the PPEA project, we submit, or we put out a request for proposals on April 26th. We put it out on EVA, the state's electronic purchasing site, we put it on our county website, and we had a deadline of June 7th. That was subsequently extended to June 22nd to give interested contractors more time to develop a good quality team and good quality proposal. We had two general contractors that expressed interest and actually came in toward the facility and talked with us extensively. When the 22nd, June rolled around, we received one proposal, and that was from Jamerson, Jamerson Lewis Construction. So here tonight is William Cook, he is the president of Jamerson Lewis, and he is going to kind of summarize the proposal and just get a, make sure you have a basic understanding of it, and then kind of what the steps would be from here, okay?
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Good evening, board and county administration. My name is William Cook. I'm, as mentioned, president and co-owner of Jamerson Lewis Construction. Obviously, many of you are familiar with how our company originated, just up the road here, so we're very familiar with, with the county's infrastructure and the significance of many of the historic buildings here in the county. So again, we appreciate the opportunity to have submitted and the consideration you guys have given us thus far. I'd like to walk through some of the higher level, higher level bullet items regarding our proposal. Let me make sure I can get this to work. Here we go. So the scope of our proposal, which, which all falls within the guidelines that the county has already accepted regarding PPA proposals, which, which was first, first set by the state in 2002. First, we are doing a complete renovation to the existing 1892 courthouse, utilizing every square foot of that building as best we can. We are also proposing a 1,298-square-foot two-story addition to the side of the courthouse building closest to the public parking lot, so opposite, the opposite end of Morton, and that would house a two-story elevator and a, and a common staircase to allow the public to access the main level more easily. The proposal also includes all design services and contingencies, permitting fees and so forth, as well as site improvements, which include a separate Board of Supervisors exit over towards the Morton Lane side, and that, that just, we felt, made things easier from a flow standpoint. So the proposed construction cost limit for this work, we have a total maximum proposed construction cost limit of just over $4 million. That breaks down into $3.5 million for the additions, renovations, and site improvements. $55,000 is an ad allowance for audiovisual systems, and then a $433,000 ad allowance, number two, for the exterior repairs to the building, so taking care of windows, roofing, the cupola, cornice, masonry, repointing, and repairs. Again, all this pricing includes design fees, contingencies, construction costs. And I think, you know, a big part of the PPA process is defining what that, that benefit is to the county. You know, here, what we see is an opportunity to restore his, a significant structure, a landmark in the, in the county, to a very, very high-end and important use, you know, giving the Board of Supervisors a long-term home, as well as giving the community a place to meet, gather, and, and better the county. Schedule-wise, we have a total of 20 months included from the date of comprehensive agreement to, to get you guys in the building and using the facility. Six months of that is for design and permitting services, 14 months is for the actual construction, which we have probably about 10 months for the addition, and then an overlapping eight months for the, for the addition, for the renovation work. Some floor plans here, further depicting what we, what we're proposing doing, doesn't really show well on the, on the screen, but in the upper right-hand corner, you have the lower-level floor plan. the lower-level floor plan. Sorry, you have the, that's the actual main floor plan. The upper right-hand corner shows the addition with the stair orienting from Court Street, entering a common lobby that then gives you access to a two-door elevator. That elevator then opens up into another common lobby up on the main level, giving you access to a communal hallway, public restrooms, access to an office, and then the actual Board of Supervisors' meeting room. And then on the Morton Lane end, as you continue toward page right, you have a, you have a Board of Supervisors', you know, break room, kind of entry point, a dedicated restroom, and then a breakout meeting space, so maybe a closed-door session. On the lower level, in the lower left-hand corner, you see the actual floor plan for the addition, entering down on the same elevation as the new courthouse, coming up the stairs with the elevator, and then us reusing as much of the existing basement and electrical room space, thank you, to make sure that we're getting you all-new facilities and best use of those spaces, that we're not having to cut into your actual functional space above. So with that, now giving you an idea on the elevations. There we go. So the lower left-hand corner, you see the Court Street elevation. The addition is over to the left. We want to make that historically accurate and look traditional as the rest of the courthouse. You can see where we're trying to balance the addition with everything that's currently there. And then as we back out and go to the upper right-hand corner, you see the actual view from the public parking lot. You know, already in our discussions with the county, it may be, it may behoove us to actually turn the entry and have it face the public parking lot. I think what's important to know is what we've proposed to your date is just our best understanding of a cost-effective and timely solution for a need that you guys have, and this is just a starting point for us to better define everything that you guys need from this project so we can, in turn, give you guys the best value. And with that, just a little bit of what our promise is to the county, if we are awarded, if our proposal is accepted and we are awarded the project, you know, our focus is being the best construction partner every step of the way. So with that, any questions?
Floor is open for discussion with Mr. Cook.
Yes.
The elevator, was there any thought of looking at, you know, using the current elevator instead of constructing an entirely new elevator well and having two elevators, because those elevators are expensive to maintain?
Yes, sir. Our solution, Mr. Hogan, was to create a new elevator dedicated to the Board of Supervisors' dedicated to the old courthouse, to limit the inconvenience and the complications of scheduling community access on short notice with the courthouse, something I think we've seen in the past on, for some municipalities, is anytime you have their shared entry points and multi-level access within a courthouse facility, you talk about staffing multiple local law officials to help monitor, protect, and make sure people are coming in and out as they're supposed to. And, you know, without saying that we know best for what you guys need, we just thought that that was the best starting point in saying, hey, here's, here's kind of the big-picture idea that really encompasses everything, and if it's deemed that the budget, you know, needs to be something different, then we can certainly look, go back and look at, looking at a split elevator option. But I think the county would really need to look at what those operating costs would be and how that may limit use of this facility, because the elevator is needed for the ADA access. And the stair, the front stair right now, which is the main way of getting from the lower level, or getting from grade, getting from Court Street, Morton, or parking lot up into the facility, it just, without major rework, it wouldn't meet today's codes.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Engel.
I may address Mr. Hogan's question. In a facilities committee, we have looked at using the existing courthouse, and that elevator is built so that it does have a rear access or could have four rear access for the contingency of connecting to the old courthouse. However, in talking with the judges and their, and what they want, their concern was courtroom security and courthouse security, and so rather than have to work out, we're on Board of Supervisors' night, you know, there's a sheriff there to make sure that nobody's bringing contraband into the building that could be stored or hidden somewhere in the restrooms or whatever, it just looked like this was the most expedient route to just not try to incorporate with the existing courthouse and have our own separate access.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? Well, Mr. Cook, let me assure you of one thing if nothing else. You'll never have to worry about me going up that elevator. I've been caught too many times. But thank you for coming tonight and portraying your all's structures and all that's, we're looking forward, looking forward to this.
Well, we appreciate the consideration, the opportunity to work with the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Board.
Mr. Bruce Boone, Voltec Center.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, County Administration. It was a year ago when I came to you and you gave me the opportunity to touch the, what is right now, the Carber Price Center, and allow us to take a look at what vocational training would mean to Appomattox County and the region. So it's been a, quite an educational journey. We didn't really know what direction we wanted to go in. We knew that we wanted to bring in, at the time, vocational training, but now it's really considered career technical education. So we reached out to Dr. Bennett at the high school, we reached out to Dr. Capps, we reached out to different businesses in the area, BWXT, Framatone, just Virginia Metal Fab, just to see how it would fit and what was the best way of moving forward. So, big long story short, we reached out to CBCC through Dr. Capps, and we made a partnership with CBCC for a number of many reasons. We wanted this institute to be accessible to everyone, right? Not just one segment of the region, but to have it, not, have it open for accreditation. So it was a very easy fit with CBCC, because CBCC is already at the site, they're already accredited, so every time we move ahead, whatever we add, it can fall under their accreditation. So we made an agreement with them, a partnership with them, that is, I think, going to be not only good for CBCC, but good for the county and the region. So what we're going to do this year is open up a EMT training course and a welding training course. That'll be our first steps, and again, we're going to be under the umbrella of CBCC. That allows the high school children in the area, students, to take part and get, do enrollment. It allows our students at Appomattox Christian Academy to do the same. It also opens opportunity for nighttime training for adults in the area. So we didn't want to reinvent the wheel. We wanted to see what was needed in the county and the region, and again, it was a perfect fit with CBCC because they're already looking and doing things in Lynchburg, but they're out of space in many categories. When you look at our welding center that we're going to open, we didn't want to just duplicate what they were doing in Lynchburg. We wanted to take it to the next level. So the welding courses that we're going to be providing through CBCC is basic welding training, but we're taking it to the next level. We're going to have fabrication. CBCC doesn't have fabrication in Lynchburg, and most of the surrounding areas don't provide fabrication. So CBCC will be sending their students and hopefully other areas will be sending their students to our location for fabrication. So that's what we're going to do this year. I'd like to touch a little bit on what we're looking at for the future years. My wife and I met a lady that gave us dance lessons at one time, and her fiance bought out a cabinet shop, so she, she talked him into donating over $100,000 worth of cabinet material. It fits into where we want to go next year, because CBCC wants to do woodworking, and we want to build tiny homes for disabled veterans. So that'll be our next step for next year. We're also talking to Ron at Virginia Metal Fab to do some type of machinery shop, and we're also talking to Nate at BWXT to see if we can do something there. So that'll be what we're looking to do next year. But I would like to invite the entire Board of the Administration and the public to our ribbon-cutting ceremony September 1st, which you'll get an opportunity to kind of walk through, see what we're doing. But it's been a, like I said, it's been an interesting journey. I certainly appreciate the help of Susan Adams and Johnny Rourke. We've gotten a lot of support from the county, a lot of support from just people in the region, you know, people stopping by, giving us encouragement, trying to help us along our way. So we're really looking forward to that, and I think you'll be quite surprised when you see what we've done so far. We've put up our flags, and we try to keep the brick facade and the design of the brick that's in the original building behind it, so if you ride by and notice that, you know, that wasn't by accident. We're not going to raise the flags until our ribbon-cutting, because we want to have a celebration of that, and then hopefully it will be lit by then. Do you have any general questions? I know I kind of skipped over a few things, but I'll answer any question you have.
Floor is open for discussion. I'm glad you asked that, I mean, said that, put the flags, September 1st will be raised, because as I go by it pretty much every day, there's some flags going up.
Yeah, I'm a very traditionalist, and I love to, I love to pay attention to the details, and to put the flags up now, I mean, you could do that, but I think it's more of a ceremony that we have our ribbon-cutting, you know, we pledge allegiance to the flag, we sing the national anthem. I mean, you really do something for the county. I mean, these are events that only happen one time, you know, so it's important to do, you know, make the best of it. But, you know, just in closing, my wife and I have been in this county for over 25 years. We love it here. I'm excited to hear what we're doing with the courthouse, you know, bringing back history. It's just, it's exciting. It really is. I care about detail. I care about what was, to try to bring it back. That's why I'm so passionate about what we're doing, training the children, bringing back education that is just, we're losing the talent of the old school, you know, masonry people, welders, carpentry people, and there's such a need for it that we want to bring that back. And if we can, this is just our first step, but if we can get the excitement going, and everyone is excited about this project, and we want to, hopefully, we'll continually be blessed that we can let it grow. And again, thank you for the opportunity. So many times you see buildings decay, torn down. This is a wonderful opportunity to bring it back and take it to the next level.
Any other comments for Mr. Boone? We love your vision.
Well, please come through our ribbon-cutting.
Mr. Chairman, just, just to, oh, yeah, please, definitely clap for him. No, just to echo it, we're super excited. We, it's an incredible blessing. You're a blessing to our county, and we appreciate it so much. I mean, it's a, it's an answered prayer. I know, Al, this is something specifically that you, you know, have tried to spearhead for a long time. The entire region will benefit from this, so we just greatly appreciate it. And, yeah.
I did want to mention one other thing. There was a time that we didn't think we were going to be able to get any of our welding booths ordered, because it was a tremendous lead time, and Alex at Dominion Power stepped up with a grant gift, and so did the Appomattox County Economic Development Authority. With those two gifts, we were able to order them, and believe it or not, they just came in today. We also found out they weighed 1,300 pounds apiece, so another wonderful challenge and opportunity. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, I need to put in reverse, Ms. Lord, just hang on just one second. Put in reverse, and let's go back to the PPA EA. Refresh your memory now. We need a motion to consider accepting the PPEA proposal from Jamerson Lewis and authorize staff to schedule a public hearing at the September 18th, 2023, meeting at 6:00 p.m.
Our PPA ordinance requires the Board to make a written finding that this is to our advantage to use PPA rather than standard procurement, so I'm going to draft up a written finding to that effect. So what you'll have next, on your next agenda is two items. The first one, you have to determine that it is to our advantage to use PPA and not go out to an RFP or bid process, and then only after, if and when you decide that, would we then have the public hearing, but you can do them on the same night. I just want to let you know, you'll actually have two items that night. The first item will be, yes, we, the Board determines that it's to our advantage to use the PPA process, and then the second item will be the public hearing.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Now we're moving on, Ms. Morton. We have Ms. Patricia Morton.
I'll make a motion that we set the public hearing for September 18th for the PPEA proposal.
Motion made. Second discussion, all in favor, please, signify.
So this is not formally adopted proposal, because we have seen it. This is just saying, we're talking about it again, next month, then have public input.
What this is going to be is two steps. First step is you say, yes, we think it's to our advantage. Second step, the public gets to put input, you may, after you hear from the public, say, oh, we don't want to do this, or we do want to do this, then the next step would be an agreement. So this is just still the preliminary decision-making phases, and so the public has an opportunity to input before we move forward with drafting.
Additional discussion? All in favor, please, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ms. Lord.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. I came to request that we, that you move to put $2,556.08 added to the part-time salary item for the registrar's office, which is line item 1302, 1,003. And I feel you deserve some explanation as to how this came about, that I need this money for last year. This is for fiscal '23. I've talked to a couple of you, and I wanted to give you a little background. The first was an overage on this line item in the first half of June of $1,516.24. I thought this was balanced out by the operational half of the budget, but Ms. Adams educated me two weeks ago that they're really treated separately, the salary portion and the operational portion, so I was conflating those two, and I should not have done that. The second part of $1,039.84 was spending for the second half of June, which was paid to my employees in July, and I thought that rolled into the fiscal '24 budget. So I had a couple of misconceptions here of how the budgeting works, and I've now been educated further on that, and I appreciate that. And then we come to a mistake that I made, which is, when I last saw you, I did not realize that I did not have the part-time salary money that I had requested for fiscal '24. The only thing I've been able to figure out is that I opened both spreadsheets and looked at the... at the, what we proposed, what we requested, and saw the $5,000, and thought that was in the other one as well, and it was not. So I thought that that last half of June would be rolling into fiscal '24 and would be covered. It was not. So that's the first part of what I need to explain to you there. Any questions on that? I'd also like to talk about something else for fiscal '24, but any questions on '23? No? Okay. All right. So then, for fiscal '24, the reason that we had requested the $5,000 in the beginning was to cover three situations. Emergencies, I now have a full-time deputy, his name's Eric Good, and if he's out and I get in a car accident, somebody legally needs to keep that office open. Right now, that's either my electoral board or one volunteer that we have who's a deputy registrar. So that's number one. Another reason was staying open at lunchtime. This board had requested that we stay open at lunchtime, and we've been doing that virtually 100% of the time until recently. And the only problem now, it's not a problem normally, but the only problem is when one of us is out, then we have nobody to cover at lunchtime. So we are not doing that. We're closing for 20, 30 minutes at lunchtime. And that's, our voters have gotten used to it, presumably seeing us there all day. I like having it open. You like having it open, so that's something there. The third was to help with early voting, additional deputy support. And the deputies are the ones that check people in, because we use live Verus check-in. So the officers of election that help in the front office are definitely a help during early voting, but they cannot actually check the voters in and check that the voter has not already voted. So going back and reviewing, I reviewed the last three years' worth of early voting time and the number of voters. And I concluded that with a full-time person, I have about two hours a week more time of a helper than I did in 2022. So I'm reasonably comfortable that it will be able to cover early voting okay without extra deputies. It is fewer man-hours than in '21 or in 2020 that I had available. However, the early voting numbers have been trending downwards since 2020. 2020 was the peak, and then they got cut in half in '21, and cut by about a third again last year. And your guess is as good as mine as to what's going to happen this year, whether it will go up again or not. So Ms. Adams asked me an excellent question, which was, do other counties generally have some money for covering emergencies and things like this? So I did a survey, that's the second page I gave you, and the survey indicates that, yes, most do, quite wide variance on how much part-time help they have. The only county I talked to, who was Giles County, that said they will be going back to zero, where we are now, for part-timers. And the deputy who's been there for 20 years joked with me that they are not allowed to have emergencies, which, that's great, if you can control it. I don't know how you control that. So my request for fiscal '24 is one of two things. Either $500 just to cover emergencies with confidence, and that would only be used in an emergency, or $1,000, which would cover emergencies and give us the couple hours we need to cover at lunchtime. I don't believe in bringing an employee in for half an hour, so I had been using Debbie Rush to cover both for emergencies and lunchtime, and she is able, we give her other work, and she comes in for a minimum of two hours, was the way it was recently. So I request that you add either $500 or $1,000 into the fiscal '24 budget, so that I have some part-time money, because I feel that that's a risk that the county should be covering ourselves a little bit better on. Any questions about that?
Questioned. Now, does this add up to a little over $3,000, if you ask? Is that correct?
Which, that I'm asking for? No. For, for the first part, for fiscal '25, it's $2,556. Okay. The, for fiscal '24, it's either $500 or $1,000, depending what you wish to cover. So the lunchtime is not that big a deal, you know, really. I'm going to try to do my best to stay open during early voting, because I really think that's important. And we're, basically, we're not planning on taking any vacation days, so it's really an issue if one of us gets sick. And since, since we don't have all the part-time staff that we had before, really, the only way to stay open and keep checking people in is whoever is there skips their lunch that day. Not the end of the world.
Your hours of operations, what, 8:00 to 4:30?
It's 8:30 to 4:30.
8:30?
8:30 to 4:30, yep. That's the hours that the board had set long ago.
So that doesn't coincide with the rest of the county?
It does not coincide with the rest of the county. If we, you know, we're in a separate building, and it's been, the way the hours are set, we do have to be there earlier. My deputy comes in at 8:00, and so he's actually been getting a lot of work done, because our software gets harder to use as the day goes on. We're having some problems with connectivity to Richmond.
But the people that work, go to work early in the mornings and expect service, not at your place necessarily, but in the place within the realms of the county, they're not going to receive services at 8:00.
Generally, what we have set up since Eric started is that, yes, if somebody comes and sees his car there and knocks on the door, he's going to answer it and help them. I can't do that for voting unless we officially change the hours, and that's up to the electoral board and myself to look at those hours.
I'd like to see you carry the hours from 8:00 to 4:30 back to your electoral board.
I will do that.
And see what, see what comes out of that.
Okay, I will do that.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hogan.
The $1,500 and change overage on the, the part-time line item.
Yes.
How did we get to that? How did we wind up spending more than we had in that line item?
So what I realized in hindsight, being 2020, is that I had spent too much on redistricting assistance last fall. So we mailed all of our voters, we mailed out specialized instructions for those three voting locations that had changed a bit, and we mailed out specialized instructions to those voters that got moved because of redistricting. So we mailed over 12,000 voter cards, some with maps in, some with different things. So that was a big project, and I used a lot of officer election help, which I was charging to my budget, thinking that this was a registrar's project. Obviously, it's all really one department. And what I should have done in hindsight is realized I was probably going to be tight on money by the end of the year, and come to you sooner and asked for an increase. So for that, I apologize. When it got down to June, we were in the throes of getting 15 candidates certified, and so I needed the hours to get that done.
One thing I wanted to clarify for the record. State law requires the registrar to follow county policies, except where they interfere or would impede elections. So it's not the electoral board to decide whether the hours should be 8:00 to 4:30. That's county policy. That's what they should be doing pursuant to state law, because that in no way impedes or interferes with the elections. So I just wanted to make clear that that's what the law is. The law says that county policies must be followed by the registrar's office.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Morton, you, you heard that.
Mm-hmm.
So I think now, instead of going to requesting, you're going to tell them, this is the way it's going to be.
We will certainly be discussing it. Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one more question. Are we, so '23, you know, we're done with that. Fiscal year '24, are we still planning on paying somebody to move our voting machines?
Yes, that is part of the plan.
And that costs how much?
It costs $1,600 per election, of which we, in fiscal '24, we expect to have three elections. Because we're, at this point, expecting a June primary, and of course, we'll have a March primary. Any question about why we're spending that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we transfer the 255608 to supplement the budget. And the, we can discuss the other things, the $500 or $1,000 request, but separately, I'll make that motion.
All right, a motion duly made. Is that second? Second discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I want to provide clarification, so that there's not any misconceptions of the board. The reason that the registrar has been asked to make this request before the board, because it's all new money. Her total budget is in negative, so it's not like we could have, you know, made an exception and pulled from a separate line item. So I didn't want you to think that, because in the past, you've made that decision that you can pull from a different line item if it's an emergency situation. But there's no money here to take from another line. So we're talking total budget. And this is for FY '23, so that you know what you're voting on, because the part-time payroll is split, like, from June 15th to July 1st, is not paid until July. So when the auditors come, they're going to move those hours back. So that's why she's asking for a larger amount, because the money needs to be there for the auditors to be able to move those things back. Thank you.
Further discussion? We'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Hills?
Aye.
Reverend Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just discussion on the $500 or $1,000 request.
You want to make that in form of a?
No, I, just opening it up, just for discussion purposes. The $500 to cover emergencies, I'm not, I'll be honest, I'm not sure that I understand the request. I'm not, I'm not sure with, within the budget that, that we're providing why we, okay, the $500 for emergencies is if you're both, if you both have something.
If we're both unable to be out, so.
And that $500 is going to pay for a part-time person.
It's going to pay.
To fill in, in that event.
That's correct.
All right. Well, if we, if we.
Can I give you an example?
No. If we did have that happen, then we could, if that did happen, then we could supply that need later.
Well, we would have to make a decision quite quickly during the emergency to get someone in there. So right now, I have, the person I mentioned, Debbie Rush, is, has been on call for emergencies. I had a personal emergency last year. She helped out by covering the office. She's trained in doing some of our, some of our jobs, but she doesn't get into the Veris software.
Yeah, I get it. And I'm not being rude when I say no, because I don't, I don't need, I don't need the example, because, you know, I understand what you're saying.
Sure.
And then the additional $1,000 for covering lunch.
It's an either or, not additional. The $1,000 to cover both.
It's 500 or 1,000, additional 500.
Mm-hmm, yes.
To cover lunch, and that's.
And that's, again, just if both of us are out. If both Eric and I need to be, excuse me, if, if I'm out and Eric is in the office and he needs to go to the post office at lunchtime, he wouldn't have to close the office that day. So again, it's an unusual thing, but with vacations and sick time, it actually adds up to quite a few days that could happen.
Okay. That's more clear on the frequency.
Reverend Jones?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Looking at the counties surrounding us, Buckingham, $18,000, Floyd, $7,680, Nelson, $1,000, Patrick, $3,000, Prince Edward, $16,250. I think the request is reasonable, what you're asking for.
Thank you.
Forward.
Further discussion?
I think, I think the concern, Mr. Chairman, the concern is setting a precedence. We establish a budget, departments come, all the departments in the county ask us for, you know, meeting the needs of these shortcomings and things like that. So I think as a county, we're not going to allow the office not to be staffed in that type of situation. The $500, if that's what it takes, then certainly we need to keep the office open. I'm open to the, to the 1,000, too. I just think that we need to think about, I guess, in this coming budget, the next time we sit down and consider the budget, we're going to think about this, you know, to prevent that type of scenario with other departments.
What I don't understand, the one thing I don't understand is the example. Now, if, what's his name, Eric?
Eric, yes.
Eric. And if he has to go to the post office, or has to go somewhere else, then it would, I would assume that, as his manager, that I would be there.
Oh, absolutely. We're just talking about days when there's only one person staffing the office. That's all.
When one person is staffing it.
Yes. So for example, I went off to the registrar's meeting, and I was out of the office three days at the end of July, beginning this month. Eric had to close the door and go to the post office to be able to do our normal daily business. He wasn't gone long, but he is also legally entitled to a lunch break, and he did not take that.
Right. But is nobody else in the office?
No, we have, that's it. It's a, it's a small office, as you know.
Mr. Chairman, for the sake of expediency, I move that we give Ms. Morton $1,000 to cover her expenses in FY '24.
Is that accepted?
Second.
Discussion, other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's hard to plan for the what-ifs. And if it happens, you know, we'll have to cover it, and we'll take care of it. It's kind of like the overage from '23. We didn't know it was going to happen, but when it happens, we'll take care of it. I also think that we've got $4,800 in budget that we're planning on giving to somebody else to move our equipment, and we have the capabilities of doing it ourselves. So I think the money's already in the budget. It can be, if it's, so I.
A different budget, but it's all.
It's a different line item, but it's the same budget. So it's priorities, which is more important, paying somebody else to haul our stuff around, or paying somebody to be in the office. That's, that's where I kind of think, eh, I think we'll take care of it if it happens. That's, that's my position.
And Mr. Hogan, if the county has ways and means to do this, for its moving around, provide security on it. Okay. Any other discussion?
Yes, I have a question.
Reverend Jones?
And maybe Ms. Adams can answer this question. How does it impact county employees to have to do the moving, and how sensitive are the machines and that type of?
I think we've had this discussion many times before. Our employees, I think the problem is they like to have the equipment moved by a certain time. Airs may not be able to do it by 10:00 a.m. the morning prior to, but they would have it placed by that evening. So I think it's a, it's collaboration on both parts. Does it change the power and type of security?
Mr. Chairman, point order, if we could vote, if we could vote on my motion on the floor.
Motion.
I will say that I will certainly entertain this conversation, because it's worthy, either after this or at another time. And maybe with the new electoral board, because I don't know that this specific issue has been brought up with this electoral board. I don't think it has.
Okay, so we need to vote. We'll have a roll call vote. Motion's been duly made, and seconded and discussed. So on to motion. Mr. Hills?
Aye.
Reverend Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
No.
And I vote aye. Motion carries three to two.
Just to make sure, do you want me to spend that money to cover lunches? That's my intent.
I made, I made the motion in consideration of what you had written on this paper.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Phelps?
Welcome, ma'am. It's always good to see the trash lady.
Yeah, thank you. I hope I won't take long.
I hope I won't take long, take much of your time, but I appreciate you allowing me just a little bit of time to give an update. I wanted to go over a couple of things. Our tax collections from June fifth. As of Friday, the personal property, we have collected eighty-three, almost eighty-four percent of those taxes. Real estate, we've collected ninety-five and a half percent, which is pretty, that's pretty good because we still have the second half to go, but that's what we've collected in the first half. I have sent out delinquent letters just to let them know. We have had a good response to those. We are also getting ready to prepare to send out the second half of our tax statements, which will go out hopefully by the end of September to give plenty of time to get those paid by December the fifth is when this due. I usually do not put on DMV stops until February. I get the, and then we collect on any delinquent taxes for June and December. So usually it's in February. I usually send out a, a delinquent notice in January and give them the last opportunity to come in before DMV stop is placed on them. Once that's placed, that adds forty-five dollars to their bill. So I, I like to give them every opportunity, citizens every opportunity to pay before I actually do that. So far this year, we have collected for the county in administrative fees on DMV stops about twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-five cents. So that's county money. That's just for administrative fees. That's not included what goes to DMV. So it is a good avenue to bring in more cash for the county. So twenty dollars goes for the administration fee and then twenty-five goes to DMV. So also, I hope to have the debt set off program ready to go. I'm set up with the Department of Taxation. Hopefully by November, we will be in that program, which is just another way to collect delinquent taxes. This would be taking money from like lottery winnings or their income tax that they would be getting back. So hopefully we'll get that up and running for November and December. And like I said, that is administered through the Department of Taxation. Sands Anderson, I have provided you with a list of the auction. Our auction was held on July the twelfth and it went very well. This auction is now held here and it was also online, so it was very interesting, but it did very well. So we usually, what we do is we have staff who's always, whenever we get returned mail, they're always searching the internet trying to find where this person moved to or whatever, why they're not at their mail address or whatever. When we exhaust and cannot find them and it's over three years of real estate, we turn it over to Sands Anderson and then they go into their search and do that. And then if there's no way to find whoever it is, then Sands Anderson goes through the process of an auction. And that's what you see there. We had five properties, I believe that it was, that sold this year. And they try to work out with the, with the land owner. They try to work with them to set up a payment plan or payoff. They try to use every avenue before they actually put this property up for sale. So it's not like they just up and sell the property. They try to give the, the land owner every opportunity to pay. And they usually do have a good response. I think our delinquent, our monthly report is in the back of the board book under informational items and you can see where they've got payment plans and they set that up for those. We had our state annual audit today and that was, that passed, we had a favorable outcome on that. And then I was approached by Mr. Hogan in regards to making an investment of county funds. So I'm not, I'll be honest, I'm not familiar with investing, but I called LGIP, which is local government investment programs. And I had lengthy discussion with our representatives there just to, to help me with what we were about to do. And we did have a previous treasurer who had some funds invested. It was a small amount, but anyway. After talking with our representatives, meeting with Ms. Adams and both of us talking to the representatives, we decided to make an investment. So on July the twentieth, the investment went through. And I have provided you with an LGIP statement that lets you see that from July twentieth to the end of July, and that dividends are added at the very end of the, at the month. We received like thirty-five thousand dollars of interest. So it was an excellent, excellent move, I feel like. So thank you, Mr. Hogan, for, for asking me to do that, to look into it. It was also a learning experience for me. I just was, has anybody got any questions for me in regards to our tax collections or anything with their office?
You're on the roll.
I'll tell you what, I have an excellent staff and they work really hard and they try really hard. They're constantly looking at the internet, trying to find people and find out where they've moved to. So they do, so when you have a staff like that behind you, they make me look good. All right, well, no questions. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, under action items, excuse me, resolution authorizing submission of application for Tobacco Region Revitalization Commission, Competitive Education Program FY twenty-four. Ms. Adams, you want to talk about this? Oh, you wanted to, okay.
Not me.
Okay. This is on behalf of the Vote Tech Center. We've reached out to the Tobacco Commission who finds economic development projects and they are in support. They've come and they've visited the site. We've given them a tour. Mr. Roth has been working with them on this application and they need a resolution from the local governing body like we have or CDDC and other entities that we've applied for Tobacco Commission funding. So the money, basically, we're the financial people and it's a pass-through to CDDC.
Any questions concerning this?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move we adopt the resolution.
Is that second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is resolution honoring Officer Mark Christopher Wagner II and requesting amendment of the Line of Duty Act. Nelson County is seeking the board's support and that of the General Assembly in enacting legislation that will amend state code to provide private police officers line of duty and benefits under code section nine point one dash four hundred. Wintergreen Police Officer Mark Christopher Chris Wagner II lost his life in the line of duty on June the sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Being a private police department, the officers of the Wintergreen Police Department are not afforded the benefits under the Line of Duty Act. Virginia Code section nine point one dash four hundred, even though, along with their covered counterparts employed by a police department or sheriff's office, they are responsible for the prevention and detection of crime. And enforcement of penal laws that are exposed to the same risk of injury or death in protecting citizens or visitors of Nelson County. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hogan?
I'll make a motion to approve, and he's, he's the second private police officer that's been killed in a line of duty in the last twelve months in the Commonwealth of Virginia. The other one, well, Bridgewater Police Officer, Mr. Private College up in Shandor Valley, as along, as well as a private security officer for the college. So that's three people right there that if these benefits were extended by the state, their families may have some kind of assistance for losing their loved one. I would make a motion that we pass this resolution with one amendment in the first, now therefore be it resolved paragraph where it says, for his heroism and honorable service to the citizens of Wintergreen and insert Nelson County, it just says the county right now, but in... Just to clarify that he served in Nelson County.
Yeah, a discussion?
I'll second it first.
Okay. That's why you made the motion, second. Discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Next is request from Amis Community Disaster Relief Organization for use of the Oakville Building. Staff received an email from Mr. Tom Adams, chairman of the Amis Community and Disaster Relief Organization, inquiring if the Oakville building owned by the county could be contracted for his organizational's use. They have been looking for property or building to use as a base of operations for community and disaster efforts as well as a meeting facility. Meetings are held on the first Thursday of every month at seven PM. Since they are a nonprofit organization, they do not have much money to pay normal rent per month. The organization has been beneficial to county residents and agencies since their inception by donating over four thousand dollars to the Sheriff's Department and six thousand dollars to residents who are victims of house fires over the last two years and a plan to continue to provide donations as long as they are able to have successful fundraisers. Floor is open for discussion on the Oakville Building.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hogan?
I understand why Mr. Adams is asking and it may be a good use for that facility. However, in light of the report we got last month about the buildings that the county owns and we don't use and how much it costs us to maintain that building, I would be more inclined to dispose of the property and sell it as opposed to renting it out to somebody or allow, we would still have to do the upkeep, still do the, pay the light bill and so on and so forth. I mean, I'm not necessarily opposed to the request as long as we own it, but I don't know that we should own it anymore.
Mr. Chairman, it is, it is also a voting precinct, right?
Yes, currently, absolutely.
So that would be something to consider. Of course, the other half of the consideration is that the, I'm looking for an acronym here, the A-C-D-R-O, would have to, you know, of course, work around that and not have, provide any distraction to voting or any impediment to it. I understand your, I understand Mr. Hogan's point. It would be interesting to know what it costs the county to maintain the building, but then we would also need another voting precinct, which would end up costing the county money because they'd have to mail out flyers to notify citizens. Mr. Adams, being my constituent, I would be in support of their use of this, but I would be interested to know what, what the county does pay for the building.
Would it be beneficial to the board members if we collect this information prior to taking a vote on it and bring it back for next month's meeting?
Mr. Chairman? I think it would be beneficial to know what, you know, the utilities are, at least we're paying on that building. Because I know that, I don't know if we keep it heated in the wintertime or just turn on the heat for the voter, voter date or what, if there is, you know, plumbing in there that needs to heat. And also, I've been, been discussing with John Van Garrett, the chief of the Amis Fire Department, and we were talking about that being a possible, or another possible use of that site as a substation for the Amis Fire Department so they could preposition equipment there and be able to respond better to fires up in that district. But he has no objection to the disaster relief using it this time since they're not in a financial position to do anything with the building. It's just something they add as a, as a future possibility.
Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I also would be interested in knowing how much it costs for, because I'm not in opposition against, I think it's a great idea.
But therefore, is it consensus of the board to table this till next month's meeting after finding out necessary information? Employee salary study. At the July meeting, the county employee salary study was presented by Dr. Stephanie Davis and the board suggested that consideration of the proposal be discussed at the August meeting. Well, here we are at the August meeting. So anyone want to open up on the employee salary study? I know this is something that we've been waiting on for quite a few years, really, to see where we stand with other localities and see what our, our salary study has presented itself to each department.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hogan?
Could, could Ms. Adams maybe remind us, I know there were several options that she presented and one was to just bring everybody up to the new minimums and then one was for some compression issues and there might have been a third one.
Basically, just what you said, it was to bring everyone up to the minimum. And I think all of you, did you receive my spreadsheet last week with the employees on it?
I don't understand that.
Okay. I think I sent it out Thursday. I'll have to see where it's at. But basically, it went through every department, it listed every employee and every job title and it showed the range of, of the pay scale for that employee. And to do the, the full plan like was presented by Dr. Davis last week, last month, it would cost about seventy-five thousand dollars. And that's after we went back and we reviewed every employee and it was a little bit different from her report. Now, if you take the seventy-five thousand and you add the additional benefits, we're looking at about ninety-two thousand. That money has already been appropriated in the budget on the, you did that during the budget work session time and in hopes of if we hired a consultant, that, you know, the board would take some kind of action. Now, the people that were not included in this study were the offices that are not on the MOU and also any department heads as far as like constitutional offices, you know, air offices, that type of thing. And saying department heads, that doesn't mean like economic development tourism, some of those departments. So, you know, the recommendation was the ninety-two thousand, which is the seventy-five plus benefits, does fall within that hundred thousand that you would appropriate into the FY twenty-four budget. If you want me to go break those down into how many people would be in the, the meeting, the minimum range, I could do that, you know, whichever category. I'll resend this and it, and I'll get you to respond that you've received it. And if you didn't, I'll make sure you get a hard copy so that you can look at it. It, it better describes. I will say, like Dr. Davis mentioned back in August, the largest compression is dispatch. And that's almost half of this total seventy-five. Some departments didn't get any, some departments may have had a couple employees, some may have had a very minimum like two hundred dollars for the entire department, you know. So it was a formula that she used and I tried to explain to departments, it's not anything that we can control because she used a formula based on the value of that person in that position, based on the grade of the position and the years of service. So I can also send you her sheet, worksheet as well. So it's, it's totally up to what the board would like to see.
What's the board's pleasure? Like to get the info, peruse it, talk about next meeting?
Mr. Chairman, we asked for the salary study. We, we asked because we wanted to be competitive. We wanted to retain employees. We wanted to retain employees. We wanted to deal with what they call compression now, um, which used to be just means other people felt like they made less because minimum wage went up. Um, so I think we, we got the information, uh, you know, that, that we requested. Does, when you say dispatcher, I'm with nine-one-one, dispatchers.
Yeah, um.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Half of the.
Again, retention. I definitely want experienced nine-one-one dispatchers that, that know our county, that, you know, can make, um, make a call, you know, on what needs to be done and appropriation. Those are roads and all, and all that sort of thing. That's hugely important. Um, so, uh, and we had already set it aside anticipating the number. So I'm, I'm in support of it.
Well, I concur with you also. Any other comments? You want to make informal motion?
I will. I'll move that we approve the employee compensation classification plan proposal.
Second.
Discussion? We have a roll call vote. Mr. Hips.
Aye.
Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Henkel.
Aye.
Mr. Hope.
Aye.
And I vote aye. All right. Thank you very much to Ms. Adams for your thought plan in this. Next is consent agenda. The consent agenda involves approval of all bills, minutes, supplemental appropriations, line item transfers, and fund transfers. Any item on the consent agenda, agenda shall be removed with, from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the vote on the consent agenda. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be considered by the board individually in order which they were removed from the consent agenda following consideration of the consent agenda. As in any items that any member would like to inquire about, make a comment about?
Um.
Oh, excuse me.
You want me to?
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, I, I was contacted by Mr. Hogan, and he's exactly right because I deferred it to the county attorney. Um, item number fourteen, it's e-summons fee fund and court funds. We had, um, asked to supplement those funds into a payroll line item, and the code states that those, that that money can not be used for payroll. So I've notified the sheriff today that we need to readdress number fourteen. So if you want to just take that totally out of your vote for the consent agenda, um, and then we'll be working on how to supplement funds for that payroll line item.
Just, Ms. Adams, just to clarify, Mr. Chairman.
Not.
So that, the, the biggest portion of that from fines and, uh, from court fines, I think that's fine. It was just that smaller, roughly fifty-two hundred dollars worth, uh, that can't be used from that. Was there another line item that could change that too?
Um, I reviewed their budget today, and they do have money that will be able to replace this action.
Okay. So are we just taking fourteen out of the consent agenda altogether or just the fifty-two hundred dollars?
Um, we'll just take the whole thing out and come back and readdress.
Yeah.
Okay.
That might be easier.
Any other questions? Comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move we approve the consented agenda after removing item fourteen.
Motion due to me, is that second?
Second.
Further discussion? We have a roll call vote. Mr. Hips. Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Henkel.
Aye.
Mr. Hope.
I also vote aye.
Okay. Mr. Latch.
Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, there was some discussion about the configuration of library board and whether we wanted to go from five to seven members. I drafted up an ordinance. Um, it's in your packet. I don't know if you've had a chance to review it. My thought would be just roll it forward. Gives y'all a chance to review it. I really wish to see if anybody had any questions about the ordinance. And then my suggestion would be just, if there's interest, we can just put it on another agenda after y'all get a chance to review it.
Nothing I ever wanted to say at ample time to review it? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as written? Hearing none. We will dispose of the resolution. Thank you, Mr. Latch. Ms. Adams.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Um, I gave you my county administrator report. I think all of you should have a copy. And I wanted to add to that, remind you of the ribbon cutting on September first for Mr. Boone. And also, I'm not sure if you received this invitation from the Farmers Bank, but it's an after-hours social on Thursday, August the twenty-fourth at five P. M. And if you're interested in attending that, um, let me know. It's basically a networking session for businesses to network. And also, they're having a presentation by the Academy Center for the Arts. So if you would like additional information, I'll be happy to send it out to you. And, um, Mr. Wingfield may have sent you this, or you may have received it via email today. Is there, is a presentation about pipeline? They hold it annually just to create awareness. So if you're interested in attending that on September twenty-fifth, it's at the Spring House. So I can send you additional information too if you'd like to hear that presentation. It's about two hours. Are there any questions with anything in the report? And of course, if you think of anything later, feel free to call me. Call me or text or email anytime.
I have one item that I'd like for you to discuss with the, uh, with B. Don.
Okay.
The bill.
Mm-hmm.
My pet peeve is that, uh, area at Walmart, from Walmart to the shopping center, that they finally got around mowing it one time. It desperately, it needs mowing again. Because it's purely a safety hazard.
Was that the town that mowed that?
I don't know what they mowed it of.
I think they, they contracted with someone to mow it.
If I could add, Chairman, from where I recall, last time, the town actually has an agreement that Walmart had signed saying they're responsible for cutting that, and the town contacted them at our request, and Walmart got it cut. Because that's a private.
Okay. Let's do it again.
I'll contact the town, okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Seems like I was through there this Sunday, and it was mowed.
Oh, okay, Sunday.
You're talking about the shortcut between Walmart and the shopping center. Yeah, it, it was mowed this weekend. For this week. And I, and I know that I'd said something to Jim Boyce on the city council, and he said that they were tired of waiting for Walmart to do something, and they were going to do it and build Walmart.
Beautiful, beautiful. Delete what I said.
Okay.
Thank you for that, Mr. Henkel. Uh, we have before us reports and informational items. Uh, does anyone have any questions about the items? One, two, three, four items that are listed? If not, we'll venture right into supervisor concern. Where the hold?
I have another report.
Okay.
Uh, after our last board meeting, uh, that Thursday, July nineteenth, was a meeting of the Central Virginia Develop, uh, Workforce Development Board. And, uh, we approved adding some new members to that board. And also, uh, I asked for a copy to be given to each of you of the eligible training providers that are listed. And there's about, there's almost eighty training opportunities listed there for residents of Appomattox County. Some of these are paid for by the Workforce Development Authority in one of their grant programs. Some of them are a cost to the individual. And also, I'd like to note that the, under the workforce training program, worker training program, um, VM, uh, Virginia Metal Works has about three employees, I believe, who are receiving advanced training through a grant from the Workforce Development Center. So Appomattox is, is benefiting from this program. And, uh, we have a little bit of more influence on it, on the program since I've been elected as chairman of the, uh,
Yeah.
CLEO Board, the Critical Elected Official Board. And also, we're in the progress of trying to convince Dr. Bennett to come on board to replace the educational representative on the workforce board that just retired here a couple months ago. And if she accepts that position and is approved by the board, that'll give us an even more influence to get more of these workforce services to the county and to the businesses in our county.
Beautiful, beautiful. Thank you for that update. Any other items? Next supervisor concerns, Mr. Hips. Reverend Jones.
Um, yes, sir. I do have a concern. Um, I'd like to know what are we doing, Ms. Adams, to provide, uh, more support for, um, our library? Uh, the employees at the library? I am concerned about the amount of pressure that those employees are probably under. Uh, we providing any kind of legal, um, support for them during their meetings? What do they need? And, and where are we with, um, hiring a new meeting? You know, I'd just like to know what's kind of going on, how we moving toward a new library director?
I, I think, um, a lot of that falls on the parameters of the library board itself. Uh, they issue the, um, the, uh, any kind of solicitations on the new director. I did learn that, um, Mrs. Blutworth had posted it on additional sites. Um, I don't know if they've gotten any response yet. They recently hired a part-time person to fill the position of the part-time person that left. And, um, we, we basically leave it up to them to see, you know, what support they need.
So she contacted you, the acting director, in terms of what she might need?
Well, she has sent some emails out, um, and those are things that her board should talk about. And they've had one meeting in July. And then based on their request and that comes to us.
So nothing has come?
Nothing has come.
Thank you.
I stand to be corrected. But I think, the key word is think, that the library board is, they are going to have a training session coming up end of August, I thought it was, yeah. And hopefully, that should be very beneficial. Actually, not only to the library board, but also to us if we care to, uh, listen in. And when did you say?
It's August thirty-first.
August thirty-first. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Henkel.
And it's my understanding that the new library board really couldn't meet and do anything until they received this training. And so I believe that, you know, even though there's stuff going on, that they couldn't act on it until they done see this training. And their next, their next meeting is scheduled for September. So I imagine that'll be a work session meeting for them.
Good. Anything else, Reverend Jones? Mr. Henkel?
No concerns.
Mr. Hope?
I, I just want to thank the treasurer and Ms. Adams for following up and checking into the LGIP and, um, finding that, you know, that's an opportunity there where we're going to generate some revenue. Um, and if things continue the way they're going, uh, we could be looking at, uh, some significant, uh, revenue income that we won't have to, uh, charge our taxpayers. Um, so, uh, that will offset any tax increases. Well, you never know what the future holds, but, uh, I don't plan on any tax increases. But that, that would help us a lot in, uh, uncover some of the expenses that we have that continue to go up, just like every family, you know, with inflation. When inflation hits my kitchen table at home, it hits the county just as hard. We're still buying gas to put in deputies' cars. We're still, uh, buying gas and putting fuel for school buses. I mean, you name it. When costs go up for everyday citizen, they, they go up for the government too. And we're not the federal government. We can't print money. Um, so, uh, and we have to have a balanced budget. So, uh, I appreciate the efforts to, to look into that to help us out, find some extra revenue.
Very well said. I don't have any concerns. Now. Mr. Henkel?
That's right, Mr. Chairman.